Select Board Meeting of the Town of Shaftesbury on June 17, 2024. I'm Naomi Miller.
Recording in progress.
Does anybody here have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda?
No.
Okay. So our first order of business then is, hi Mike, is the minutes. We have...
I have the minutes for the last two.
Two sets, yep. Can I have a motion to pass the June 3 minutes?
It's removed.
Thank you. Any changes to these minutes that anybody wants to put forward? No? All good? All good, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed 5:00. And now I need a motion for the June 10 minutes.
It's removed.
Second.
Thank you. These were awfully straightforward. Anybody see anything that was missed?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5:00. Good. Warrants.
I have three warrants. I have the regular one, I have payroll warrant, and I have the stipend warrant. For this one, the signature page is on the front page, so all the good stuff is on
So check warrant number 46 for $149,979.95.
It's removed.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Second. Okay. Items over 1,000. Accessibility Systems, Inc. for $1,095.74.
We had to have the Kohol elevator looked at, the panels separated. It was something banged. Marlene said, was that there or not? So the guy came in and he fixed it and also certified it again because it was due next month. So he said, well, you're here, go right ahead.
Great.
Yeah. So we're safe.
It's really nice that nobody was hurt.
Yes.
Thank goodness. Aflac for $1,037.64.
Short-term disability and supplemental insurance.
And the Sheriff's Department for $4,357.50.
Bennington County Sheriff's Department, their fee for services for patrolling.
GA Bov Fuels for $1,427.49. That's for Kohol?
GA Bov Fuels, that's gas, oil, and diesel.
Okay. And Casella for $9,463.51.
That's the fee for transferring the transfer station items, recycling and the garbage.
Taking them to another place.
Transferring them from one place to another.
To another place.
Yes.
Innovative Surface Solutions.
Calcium chloride.
Calcium chloride, okay. Two items each for $5,443.
Yes.
Topola Eichen for $1,304.95, laptop and RA postage.
Yeah, reimbursement. We didn't have room on the M&amp;T card, so we used my Amex for laptop and docking. Thank you. What is that called?
Yes.
Carrying station? No, docking.
Docking, yes.
It's much faster.
Peckham Industries, $1,231.29.
Gravel.
RCS Consulting, $1,229.25.
Monthly computer maintenance, the email addresses and such.
Stevenson Equipment, $6,771.78.
Is that the one I asked you about? Okay, that was the, that's the mower, parts for the mower, for the side of the road, right, Mike?
Yes. Correct.
Just the season.
Yep. And I'm just going to pick one at random here.
Sure.
Matt Morris Excavating, $200.
$200.
Well, we've got a series of Matt Morse's.
That was a round for a compactor.
Yeah.
So that we could compact the pad that we put in for the shed.
The shed, the transfer station.
Tamarack Tree Care for $2,200.
There were two different expenses for $1,100. One was North Road tree removal, and the other one said the tree on the Buck Hill property had to go down, the one, the ARBA funds would take care of it.
Yeah. There was a tree out back here that Tamarack took down, and then there were some trees that we took down by going to the shop a couple months ago.
And then $74,977.50.
It's the big one.
To the North Bennington Water Department for water service.
Right. That is our bill, and will be paid with a letter of protest, like the last one.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Okay. $19,254.25 to the VLCT for property and casualty.
Yeah, the heading is insurance and bond, so there are 2024 contributions for workman's risk program, property and casualty, workman's comp, et cetera.
Weaver Excavating for $1,005.
This looked like an excavator rental from the fire department, but back in February of '04. It's kind of an older one. Sometimes they give us statements instead of invoices, so we're kind of chasing the actual evidence that was paid, and now we've paid it because they got that to us.
Great. We paid Wilmington and Campbell $310.
Mm-hmm.
That's for our attorney, Merrill.
Yeah, professional services. Yep.
Okay. Any thoughts, questions?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5:00. All right. Payroll warrant number 25 for $36,789.63.
It's removed.
Second. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tony. Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5:00. And check warrant. Nope.
One's the stipends.
Oh, right. Okay. Check warrant number 47 is the stipends, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the total is $8,750.
It's removed.
Second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. Let's start with you.
Okay.
Pass it all over. Any announcements? Too hot for announcements already? Okay. The treasurer's report. The public's coming after you because you're the treasurer.
Not used to that. We take a quick look at the cash flow, please. So let's see. You see the $47,000 there. That's the final tax reconciliation for education taxes. We were waiting for that one for a little while. So that represents the MAU portion, and we already did the elementary portion in May. Some more delinquent taxes came through. Nothing else of note there particularly. And then the disbursements, no, this is just things you've already voted on. If you want to go down just a tiny bit more, Jen, thank you. So you see our cash balance is basically $175,000, which is going to need to see us through until tax bills go out, except that's not totally true this year, and I will tell you why a little bit later. So I didn't, oh, the other interesting thing there is if you look at the other funds as of, you see a great big zero with Lister's reappraisal. The reason for that is that that was a CD that we eliminated because we're going to need to start spending money out of that. So that's, you'll find that money in the reserve account, the Lister's reappraisal reserve account instead, where it's accessible for any pay, because otherwise we are locked into another year, and we're definitely going to be spending money out of that account within a year. When are we expecting to get started with the reappraisal? It's certainly within fiscal '25, right? Yeah.
And they're already preparing downstairs, you know, preparing the space, preparing file cabinets, getting organized. So much has to come before the actual...
Yeah, so that's why we wanted to have that cash available to us right away. So I won't be reporting on that anymore now that it's at zero. Any questions about any of that cash flow? Okay, then we can look at the reserve account. Thank you. There you will see that great big number at Lister's reappraisal at the 290 line. That is the cash from the CD being put there into Lister's reappraisal. The other thing you see at the 260 line, those are all of the water payments. They are due tomorrow, so I've been processing a lot of payments in the last week. And the other, the only other transaction you see there is the restoration fund. That is, I transfer money to that whenever Marlene cashes out downstairs, so that's what that is. Any questions about any of that? Okay, the other, are we going to, when are we talking about the ARBA? Am I introducing that or is that on the agenda?
We're introducing it after the DPW report and one other item.
Okay. So if you look at the 900 line, that's the number we're going to be talking about a little bit later, currently sitting there with $658,149.33. And I guess go back and sit down, and we can talk about that later unless you have any questions about the reserve accounts as it currently stands.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Public comments.
I just had a question. I heard that the fire department rented an excavator, I guess because to take down the building was burning. Are we going to go up to the insurance company or the property owner for that? I don't know. Is the town should be responsible for that?
Good question. I think we'll definitely look into it. It was back in the winter time.
I would say Joe has dealt with this before.
Right. I would definitely talk to him.
And I want to say when I talk to him that I think that's what happens is somebody goes up to the insurance company or the property owner. Just the way on Lower East Road. Yeah, when Lower East Road was on fire, it kept rekindling, and he called for a decent-sized excavator to pull it out so they could extinguish it as, you know, because it just kept, they put the fire out and then it restarted, and they asked us, and our machine isn't big enough to do that, and I called Weaver, and they had a machine, they were right working on East Road, so it wasn't that far, so they went up and did it.
Okay.
But it was back in February.
It's a while ago.
I'm surprised it got missed because they're usually pretty good at cementing those too.
Yeah. I haven't as an action item. I'll contact Joe and just get caught up and see where we are with that.
I wonder if, you know, it was a vacant house that might not have been insured.
I don't know if it's insured yet because I don't think there's probably a mortgage on it. It's a very good point, though. Why should we have to pay for it?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Thanks, all right.
Good answer.
Any other public comments? And there's nobody on Zoom, is that right?
Mark.
Oh, Mark. Mark, hi, Mark.
Yes.
Okay. The DPW.
Hi.
Hey, hi.
I only have a couple things. Last week, or last week, last meeting, two paving bids were opened, one from Springfield Paving and one from Peckham Industries, actually Peckham Road. After reviewing them, I would like to award that to Springfield. They've done the last couple paving jobs for us, and would like to continue to use them. They were the low bidder, and it does fall in to the money that we have for the grant too, so all the numbers will work.
Great.
I just need...
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the Springfield paving bid for, I think I have the number here.
Oh, I got it right here, too.
215?
215.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Going with Mike's suggestion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And talking with the contractor, we are looking at sometime in September to resurface that road. That'll give us plenty of time to do the work that we need to do out there in the next, this summer.
And you're going to be working on the culverts.
Yeah, we got 10 culverts to change out and a bunch of ditch cleaning to do, and a couple dead ash that need to come down, and there was something else, too. I can't remember right now. But yeah, we'll be out there for the next two months, for sure. And then they'll come in and pave, and then we'll have to show, we'll have to put the shoulder gravel down, and then we'll be good for another couple years. The other thing that I had is we've had posted for a couple months now a part-time position. Actually had somebody come to me over the weekend and ask if we still had the position open, and I said, yeah, we do. So he stopped by, filled out an application. I kind of did a little interview with him today, and he's, he just graduated from Arlington, went to the Southern Vermont Tech, which used to be the CDC. I didn't realize it changed the name, for heavy equipment and forestry. And he was looking for a full-time job, but the part-time thing is open. He's got experience with mowing and all that stuff because he does property maintenance now, so his name is Patrick Murphy. He's from Arlington and done a lot with chainsaws and some equipment, and he also just got his CDL-2 through the school, so it'd be good for him. He'd get some experience with the truck and stuff. He had a couple other trainings that we've all, my guys have done, the game of logging, OSHA 10, and when he showed up, he brought all that and gave me photocopies of it and everything.
Yeah.
He was pretty organized. I was really impressed.
Right out of high school.
Right out of high school, yep. He was looking for full-time, but he knows it was part-time and be good learning experience and good training and, you know, something down the road. So seemed like a pretty good candidate. I haven't had any interest at all, so I would like to get the approval to hire him, and he would be able to start next week, next Monday.
Hmm. We have a motion to appoint Patrick Murphy.
I'd like to hire Patrick Murphy. Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
5:00. Great. Congratulations.
Right now, I mean, we've been kind of rotating everybody mowing the parks and just with guys taking vacation and part-time guys definitely going to be handy.
Make you work out great.
I hope so. Well, thank you. This week, we're just kind of, guys are taking their vacations because it's the end of the fiscal year, and we'll be roadside mowing and working on the new building at the transfer station, and that's about it because of the holiday this week, so it's kind of a slow week this week, and moving furniture around Kohol.
There's a closet you sent me.
Thank you.
That's all I have if anybody else has any questions or anything.
Paul, did you know that Jeff Deloria's getting through at the end of the month? He says he's got, gave you two bids or two prices, and you probably better talk to him before...
So I, the funny thing is, I called him at like 3 o'clock, and he said, did Art just call you? And I was like, no, why? And he goes, oh, because he just left my office. I'm like, yeah, no. So that was the other thing that I want, that's going to be on the meeting for next week, or next, next meeting, I'm going to have the purchase agreement and everything for the truck that we need to order. We won't be buying, we won't be paying for the truck next week, you know, when it's done, but I have all the paperwork. He just has to rewrite the purchase agreement, and then it'll be signed and we can order the truck. But I wanted to do that for next meeting. I didn't have everything ready for this one, so thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did, did you folks all get a chance to read the Open Meeting Act revisions stuff?
Yes.
Yeah. So Paul and I were talking about it, and Jen, and sort of, we all had the impression that it was saying that for advisory committees, it's going to be up to each committee to decide how they want to handle it. And we were wondering whether maybe that's cumbersome as well as non-inclusive, and whether it might make sense for us to make a town policy.
To make every meeting hybrid is what we're talking about at this moment.
Yes, exactly. Yes, thank you.
For those who haven't read the Open Meeting Act revisions. Yes, it's coming out of COVID, and now that COVID has ended, or the national pandemic has ended, the legislature has made some new rules about inclusivity and either going back to all in-person or a hybrid option, but being 100% remote now is not an option for bodies.
Not an option for any body.
For any bodies that work in municipal government, and so...
Except for advisory committees.
Except for advisory committees.
Which, so...
We have few of.
The state is saying that advisory committees are allowed to choose to do whatever they want.
Right.
And that's, that's really what we need to make a decision about. Do we want advisory committees to each be free to choose their own modality, to be entirely virtual or entirely in-person or hybrid, or do we want to make a policy?
Who are our advisory committees at this moment? The sewer feasibility committee and...
The CCDC.
The CCDC.
The REC committee.
The REC committee is a standing committee.
Yes, but it, it looked, it looked like, from their description of what advisory committees were, that it's anybody who doesn't act, any committee that doesn't actually expend funds.
Right.
I think so.
That's how we understood it anyway.
So that would be one. The cemetery committee, would that...
They do.
They expend funds. Okay, so the veterans committee, if it restands again. I'm trying to think of any other committees that we have that would be advisory.
The planning commission, actually.
Yep. The DRB.
Oh, the DRB was their example.
Oh, right.
Of a non-advisory.
The EDC.
Yeah, the Economic Development Committee would be.
Advisory.
Yep. So quite a few, actually, now that I think about it.
Yeah.
Fit into that very definition.
Right.
And some of them are already going hybrid.
The energy committee.
Right, the energy committee. The...
That would be where you have to have somebody here, right?
No, some, it can be arranged. Jen has been doing it, showing either the chair or the vice chair of each committee how to run the Zoom.
I will be showing the chair how to do it. I haven't yet.
Because it would be...
Yeah, I've been running them so far, but the idea is to train the chairs how to run the Zoom.
And some of them are during the day, in the afternoon, they're night meetings. Very few of them are night meetings, actually, which is good.
And then there was a recording component as well, correct? That then had to go up on the website. And what I didn't understand about the Meeting Act revisions was if it had to be a recording or if meeting minutes could stand in place of that requirement.
If the meeting is recorded, the whole thing is going to go on the website. We're not going to separate it.
Okay.
Because it's just, it's more, a lot more work to separate it, actually.
To just do, and so instead of, in the place of having meeting minutes, then, there would just be recordings?
No, it was going to be both.
They'll be both.
Continue to post the minutes.
I was wondering about that.
If the meeting is recorded to the cloud, which I will teach them to do that, it's very simple.
Right, sure, sure.
And it's, they're just going to, I'll just go back in and post the link to the...
It automatically includes the audio, so...
Right.
Right, well, and that was why I was wondering if, because there is a visual of the meeting and they can hear, then would we need to be doing meeting minutes on top of a video recorder?
Yeah, the meeting minutes are the legal thing that remain around forever.
So, okay.
And the recordings are required to be up only for...
Posted for at least 30 days.
Got it, okay.
For every meeting that's recorded.
I did not read that little caveat moment.
That is posted hybrid, right.
Okay.
There were a lot of caveats in that.
There was a lot of documentation.
Yeah. It's actually, it's very confusing.
It was very confusing.
The sewer committee meetings, we've had three, and I think they were all hybrids so far, so it would just be a natural transition.
Right. But I think some of them, like the recreation committee, I don't think has ever, and I don't know if they submit meeting minute notes that we know of.
I got the first meeting minutes from the REC committee ever.
Yes, and so that might be a way at least for folks to kind of participate even after the fact with seeing them, because they meet during the day at, I think, 10 a.m., so...
And they're doing a lot of...
And they're doing all sorts of awesome work, so it would be nice to know.
Absolutely.
I think...
But it would be, you know, a requirement we'd be taking on and imposing on committees who haven't had...
And they'd have to have the system.
It also gives the people the opportunity to participate easier.
Definitely, it's the inclusive thing to do.
More inclusive, exactly.
One of the things...
Especially there's a budget consideration, and you're, this committee is expending budgetary funds. They're spending money.
Recommending, they're advising about the spending of money. That's what makes them advisory.
But it should be, have access.
One of the things, though, that's very interesting is that right now our setup is not super conducive to... is not super conducive to up and down and although because our meetings happen at different times and some of them during working business hours for you all. So having all of this set up and recording might be of an, I don't know. I'm just thinking devil's advocate moments.
That's the best.
Yeah, that is true. And so that's just another consideration with all the wires and everything. People coming in to do business with you potentially or the treasurer and having a meeting that's getting recorded here.
If it's not a select board meeting, it's it's only a third of the wires.
That is true. We don't have all of it.
No offense, Kat TV.
Something to consider because.
Well, we do need to think about getting a more up to date system for doing all this anyway.
We would request a camera that zooms in. I'll pick it up.
Yes, maybe that's something for the operations coordinator to do some research on because that might be nice if we could just have it all in one delightful system.
I'll have it mounted with a remote to get your good profile.
Great. Okay. So what do people think?
I think going forward, yeah, the hybrid, you know, it might be a little bit rocky at the start, but that's the way it's going to be in the future. I mean, the idea that people have to, you know, physically be present at like a 10:00 AM meeting, you know, a lot of people kind of tend from home or from work or on vacation or just think that we should go hybrid as a policy.
I just hope people aren't intimidated joining committees. That they're going to be recorded or photographed.
Do they have to be recorded or can they just be on Zoom and not recorded? I can, I don't know if I looked into that into the legislation.
Well, we would turn the camera, right?
Yeah, they could be like Mark. They don't care. Photo. I mean, and.
That's right.
If it's not a select board meeting, they're not actually recorded on the Zoom. Does that make sense?
Well, if they spoke, they would be recorded.
Yeah, speaking in a public meeting, though, I think the, I mean, you're kind of submitting yourself to being recorded or appearing in the minutes or, you know, I mean, that's part of.
Exactly. It's just, it's more inclusive. Anybody can participate. They don't, if they don't want to be on camera, they could always participate via Zoom and they don't have to be on camera at all.
If you're on camera.
I was thinking about committee members.
Yeah, they can be.
Yeah.
Oh, you meant the committee members who are here in person.
Physically in person because a lot of them do meet.
Yeah.
Fully in person unless somebody is sick or like the hybrid was an option for if you're away or on holiday or.
Yeah, some committees I know have rules that you have to be physically there for a certain number of meetings. I guess it depends on the committee.
Yes.
Are things that committees would have to.
Hybrid seems that it's the future.
Yeah, I agree.
It's it's way more inclusive.
All right. So um, can I have a motion to adopt a town policy that all Shaftesbury Town Committees advisory as well as non advisory must hold their meetings in a hybrid mode?
So we'll second.
Second by Brad. Further discussion?
Yes. I'm wondering if maybe if we are creating a town policy that maybe we want to have a written form first to then look at before we adopt something that we have not read through and like fully gesticulated on, I mean, not gesticulated on, cogitated.
Cogitated, yes.
I just.
Hopefully, the cogitation doesn't make us gesticulate.
Yes, I'm hoping not, but maybe so that for our next meeting, it can be in our packet and then we can then, in case there's something that we think of that's brilliant or we talk to another town that there's like, oh, we have this already. Here's the boilerplate language or something else.
Okay. So we have to do something with this motion that's on the floor.
You can table it.
We can table it. Yeah.
All right. Motion to table the motion.
Sorry.
Does somebody second the motion to table the motion?
Second.
Brad, seconds it. All in favor of table the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
So close.
Martha, Brad? Yes, aye?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Aye.
Okay. So the the motion is tabled and instead we will construct a policy, language and distribute it for the next meeting. Yeah?
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So now we're coming to the explanation of what we're going to be doing with ARPA funds. Actually, tonight, we are proposing to do it. And we came, we actually wrote up, Paula and Martha, in fact, wrote up the result of a lot of conversations that we had with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And I think I'm just going to read it out loud unless you want to read it.
I'm happy to if you want.
It's also going to be placed on the website because this is a really complicated thing that it was hard for us to wrap our minds around. And Melanie has kindly agreed to stick around tonight because she is our treasurer and our money guru. And she can explain to people any piece of it that they don't understand.
Yeah, sure. Okay. In late 2023, the federal government changed the requirements for how ARPA funds needed to be obligated for towns. The requirements now dictate that the funds must be obligated in contracts for shovel-ready projects by December 31st, 2024. The ARPA funds still need to be expended by December 31st, 2026. The citizens of Shaftesbury asked the Select Board to spend these funds building a town green, community center and pavilion. The Select Board has been working with the ARPA funds to purchase and clear the lands for these projects and will need to continue and will need continued time to apply for matching grants and to imagine the design and construction of these community spaces. They have created the Community Center Development Committee, CCDC, to help with this planning process, which will extend beyond the December 31st, 2024 obligation deadline. Due to this change in timing imposed by the federal government, we are currently working with the league of Vermont League of Cities and Towns, VLCT, our auditor Sullivan Power and Company, and legal advisors to protect our pool of remaining ARPA funds in order to create a reserve fund from which we can leverage the money to match with state and local grants, thus providing the town with more purchasing power. In keeping with the federal government's guidelines on what ARPA funds may be used for, the Select Board will be passing a resolution to obligate and expend state and local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of $658,149.33 for the purpose of municipal workforce retention to reimburse the town for payroll expenses from the period of September 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, supporting our response to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency. Taking this approach will make the general fund revenue available that would have otherwise paid for the municipal operating expenses identified in the resolution. Using one-time unanticipated revenue, ARPA, will create a fund balance in the general fund. The Select Board will then ask the voters to approve use of this fund balance, considering existing policies, practices, and processes, to create a new reserve fund as per 24 Vermont State Statute 2804, to hold the money until the town is fully ready to expend it. Since the Select Board will be using general funds, not ARPA, the federal character of the money will no longer exist. Taking this approach, which is recommended by the VLCT, allows towns to meet the timelines for obligating and expending their ARPA funds while simultaneously giving us time to fully realize the wishes of the residents of Shaftesbury.
That's a mouthful, right?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to add to that, Mel? I think it would be helpful if you gave the financial perspective.
Yeah, it is. It's really not nearly as complicated as it sounds. We have, we have all of that ARPA money sitting there in the reserve account, as we said. And what, what the VLCT has told us is that we can, with with the approval of the feds, retroactively apply that cash to workforce retention, i.e. payroll, within fiscal '24. And then we would just transfer that that cash. It would be a fairly simple journal entry saying that $658,000 of our expenditures in the fiscal year are retroactively called workforce retention, freeing up that cash to go to the the general fund for as a fund balance that we can draw on as when the voters have had a chance to to weigh in on how it's going to be spent. So it'll just sit there as a fund balance until until that gets voted on. So it's going to come out of the reserve account with a single journal entry saying $658,000 of our expenditures in the fiscal year are retroactively called workforce retention coming out of the ARPA fund. Is that clear? Is that clearer than what you said?
I think it helps to hear it over and over in different words. Right.
So what what I did was I went back and I looked, it wasn't entire payrolls because there's stuff in there that's that I don't think is appropriate. I don't think we can use tax outlays for this, for example. So what I did was I looked at the entire expenditures in the budget. I'm not going to show all of this to you because it's more detail than you need. Everything highlighted, I I figured can legitimately be called workforce retention for, I mean, for so stipends and wages and and retirement benefits that we we contribute to and health benefits that we contribute to. I think all, everything you see highlighted here can legitimately, the way I am interpreting what the VLCT is saying, can legitimately be called workforce retention by the way they are defining it. When you add that up for the entire fiscal year so far, that actually comes to almost $750,000, which is more than we have. So I subtracted the first two months of the year and we're getting to a place that's very close to our existing cash balance. So so that's, that's basically what I did on this spreadsheet. It's not as complicated as it sounds. To get to a point in time after which all of our these expenditures within the fiscal year counterbalances the available funds in the ARPA reserve account. So what that means is we're just going to do, once you guys vote on this, we're, first thing we're going to do is send all of that cash over from the reserve account that we were looking at before, send that over to the general fund where it's going to, as I say, it's going to sit there as a fund balance. And then I will do the the other part of the transaction will be to say, this amount was, I don't even think I'm going to do it line by line. It's, it's going to be a single journal entry saying that was an ARPA expense is counterbalancing payroll expenses for fiscal '24. There'll be a single entry, so it'll be very easy to audit. It's going to be a new account that's called ARPA. I don't know what we'll call it, but it'll be very, very clear to to anybody looking at the paper trail. It's going to be a single transaction, very, very clear.
And you consulted with Sullivan and Powers.
Yes. I talked about it with Jordan and they're doing, they're helping a bunch of towns figure out how to do this. And the side benefit that I alluded to when I was talking during the treasurer's report is that that cash is going to mean that if that's sitting in the general fund, we no longer have to worry about getting a line of credit. So that that's a, not the intention of it, but it is a benefit that comes out of it.
Yeah, we save ourselves that interest.
I think that's important to know that many other towns.
I was just going to say that, Brad. It's very important people hear that. Many other towns are doing this.
Sullivan and Powers is, that's our auditing firm, and they are consulting with the VLCT to get the word out. And this is the method, I think, that practically every town is going to be using. The the towns that even accepted the ARPA funding, unbelievable to me, there are those that did not even accept it. But this is, they're all in mostly in the same in the same boat because they were sitting on the money, not not instantly spending it. And so they need to figure something out. And the fact, I mean, that's an important point. The other important point is that this is has the approval of the feds. So that's, that was the part that I need into here. And and they are fine with it.
Yeah.
And our legal advisor, our town attorney has looked at all of this as well and and.
And then if the, so we need a vote of the town, do we get the money from the general fund into a reserve fund in the future? Is that the case?
Yes. Next March, we will put that on the ballot to create a reserve fund.
And if we didn't, if that vote went down, then the money would stay in the general fund, is that?
I don't think we are allowed to use it just to lower taxes, for example. I think there are still strings attached to this money. And I don't think we're allowed to say, wow, you know, we got this windfall. So there are things that we have to, we have to spend it eventually on these these projects.
In the spirit.
But if it didn't get to a reserve fund, we'd have to, every expenditure would have to be a town vote.
No, this will no longer be federal money. We will have expended our ARPA money, is how I understand it. And.
Okay.
And what we are federally required to do is to spend it before the end of this year, this calendar year, and to spend it on the things that we're allowed to spend it on.
Which in this case we're.
In this case, it's workforce retention.
Right.
So we will no longer have any federal funds.
Right. Okay.
And we could, in fact, spend it on whatever we wanted if the, if the, if the citizens did not vote that reserve fund.
I want to correct myself. I did misspeak. That that was an earlier, an earlier version of what the VLCT was saying.
That's right.
And and in fact, what what this, what doing this instead does make it no longer federal money because it has already been spent because it has been spent on on workforce retention. So I guess it is possible that that, I mean, I hope that that this town will be forward thinking and will apply it to some of the visionary projects that that various committees are working on.
We're kind of counting on.
Yeah.
On our fellow citizens.
Yeah, right.
To do that.
But we would need voter approval to spend that money.
No, we do not need voter approval to spend it. We would, we would need.
If it's still the general fund, I think you do.
Yeah, I think you do. Yeah.
Art wants to say something.
That type of money could be spent as discretion of the Select Board owner. The minute you change it.
Right.
Now you have a budget that was voted on in March that goes into effect January or July 1st. That was already set up. So I don't think you can spend that money in from July 1st through June 31st of '25 because it wasn't voted on by the.
Right.
By the voters. You're going to have to wait until.
Yes.
The budget of.
The '26.
The '26 budget. Thank you for that clarification. Right. Exactly.
So the, so they're going to vote.
But we could put, I mean, we would be able to put it into that budget.
Yes.
Yes.
But you wouldn't be able to spend it.
We can't go out of step.
But they'll be voting in it in March of '25 and at the town to try to get in it. Yes. And then for the next fiscal year is when you could, but it would be held to, and and doing this will allow us to get matching funds from the federal government, from state government, from local foundations to continue to kind of create the work that the citizens. government, from local foundations, to continue to kind of create the work that the citizens have asked us to do in building the town green and community center and pavilion.
Making Coal Hall ADA accessible, I think that's extremely important.
Yes. We definitely have that in our sights. We can't let go of that from our sights. But I just want to stress what Martha just said, that this will allow us to use the money as we thought we would be able to originally, before the feds rolled the spending deadline forward. So this sort of allows us, assuming that the citizens pass this reserve fund, allows us to have this reserve fund that we can use. That's what we meant by leverage, that we can leverage it as matching funds and grants and do a lot.
And to create more purchasing power to kind of create these things. And you are correct, the Coal Hall renovations, thank you, and ADA compliance is another one of the things that was asked.
But after 2025--
Yes.
--we would still need voter approval for any purchase we made from that account.
It would become a reserve fund. If the voters voted in 2025 to create it into a reserve fund--
Right.
--then it's--
It's reserved for that purpose.
But if it didn't, if that failed and it stayed in the general fund, then you would be free--
Then we would need to budget for each thing.
Okay, all right.
So there is one other issue that we, if we're going to demo that building, do we want to keep some money there, since that is a short-term ARPA expenditure?
Yes.
So we don't want to clear out the entire 658,000. We want to leave what we think we're going to need for the--
You're going to leave $100,000. $100,000.
Really?
Because you've got this building over here, too. And you've got asbestos in both of them.
Oh, wow.
And that's probably a little high, but I'm telling you, you're talking $100,000 to get rid of both these buildings.
Okay, I mean, that's--
Then we'd have to amend.
We just turned the six into a five.
Even if that's on the high side and there's still some left in there, there are other things to do.
And then we'd have to change the--
I got a number on this one.
And change the dates.
And just to ballpark.
Melanie can figure that out.
In that, so.
That's right. I'm sorry.
We can talk to you. It's just about what goes up on the website and the dates.
And the dates, because it would shift if we're leaving money.
Yeah, I think we'll just need to change the language a little bit, that we're not, that some of it is already allocated on a short-term basis, but that's well before the deadline. That part of the reserve account is just not affected by this.
Okay, so we're going to change this number in the resolution by $100,000.
Yep. That makes sense.
I think that's just the same number. I mean, I know I'm a little high, but--
Right. But we haven't gotten all the bids in on that stuff, so we have no way of knowing exactly. Yeah.
And I didn't have this, that building in yet either, but if we double both of them, we're going to be close to $100,000.
Well, that's good, because that was one of the questions, like, what, we knew that, that's like right around the corner, doing that. So the timing is like, do we leave it? Do we--
How long do you have, I mean, to make this decision?
Right now.
But we have enough time to leave some funds, because it's probably going to be taken down in the fall.
Yeah.
So there's, oops. There's time to--
The hard deadline is December 31st, is that not true?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The hard deadline is December 31st.
I mean, if you're really worried about having that exact number, you know, getting it torn down and then reevaluating what you're going to vote on, then you would know exactly what money that you'd be moving over.
It's fiscally simpler if we do this before the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah.
Oh, right, yeah.
Which is why we wanted to do it at this meeting.
I see.
Yeah. And so if we have an extra amount there, that's good. We've got other ARPA-related things we know we want to expend it on.
Throughout the year.
Yes.
I think that'd be safe to stay around there.
Melanie, that sounds right.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we just don't want to have any money sitting there in December that we have to, you know, give back or, you know--
Right. Want to make sure.
Right, because if you don't spend it, you have to give it back to the feds, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And they want us to have it. That's why they made it possible for us to keep it.
Yeah, we just have to spend it in a legitimate way, with a very bright light shone on it.
Yes. Marie here, as one of the two members of the public, do you have any questions about this? Any thoughts?
No, I was just saying to him, can I have the money, dollars? Yeah. If you're going to take it down.
So are we sure if that building was 70, you think that one's only going to be 30 or whatever?
Depends on the asbestos. The inspection's this week, and that's going to be my update, but we're moving along. It's getting, it's right there.
I got caught short. I don't see now. I don't think there's hardly any asbestos over there, unless there's asbestos in the roofing or the roofing. The material on the side is like tar paper. Sometimes they have asbestos in them, but as far as boilers and all that, no.
The inside of that building, it's pretty near just a frame. It's just, whenever it's on the outside, the asbestos part, the asbestos is in this one, that's the cost of it.
So how about I read the resolution, and then we can, you know, move to pass it and then have any more discussion we want to have? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. Resolution 2401, Resolution for American Rescue Plan Act Allocation. Whereas on March 11th, 2021, the President of the United States signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act to provide continued relief from the public health and economic impacts of the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas, ARPA created the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, SLFRF, that provided direct funding to state, local, and tribal governments across the country to support their response to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas, the town of Shaftesbury has accepted an allocation of SLFRF monies in the amount of $1,025,627.73. And whereas, the SLFRF provides needed fiscal relief for recipients that have experienced revenue loss due to the onset of the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas, Treasury presumes that up to $10 million in revenue has been lost due to the public health emergency, and recipients are permitted to use that amount, not to exceed their award amount, to fund government services. And whereas, recipients may elect a standard allowance of $10 million to spend on government services through the period of performance. And whereas, all recipients may elect to use this standard allowance instead of calculating lost revenue using the formula provided by the U.S. Department of the Treasury, including those with total allocations of $10 million or less. And whereas, the town of Shaftesbury has the need to fund government services while in the recovery phase of the COVID-19--
The fund balance and the creating, or hopefully the town approving, a new reserve fund in March, but putting a little bit more of the timeline in and saying that-- then we are not able to spend this money until fiscal year of '26. And that, I think, would be an important part that we should add to this statement, just so that--
It's a good idea.
--with all the feedback that we just received.
Make it as clear as possible.
Yes.
Absolutely. Great. But just to be clear, we're not voting on that. We're voting on the resolution.
Just--
Yeah. No one. Great. For the record, this is a large amount of money and a big decision that we spent a long time researching, and so, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Past 500. Wow.
So we'll have to come back to this to sign it.
We'll have to come back to this to sign it.
Because it has to be fixed.
Yeah, we're all going to need to stop in to sign it before the end of the month. Okay. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
You said it really clear.
I'm hearing it back in my head. I'm not really sure it was that clear, but it's clear to me, what I have to do. And anybody who has questions, you know, please don't hesitate to pick up the phone and give me a call.
Great, thank you.
And the foremost in my mind when you were reading it initially was federal approval.
Yes.
And that was confirmed, yes.
Yes, it has been confirmed.
Yeah, yeah, that helped us, too. Good. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, number 12. Update on the methane vent at the landfill.
Slow-going, but getting done. Right now, Patrick at MSK, he reached out to Casella. The next step is finding someone who will do the work, like a methane expert, who knows how to handle, you know, these things and does this. There are people who replace these vents all the time. So we're, I know. But we are on, it's a quest, and we are on it, and with Patrick as well.
Casella Construction has a, Casella has a construction side that they specialize in landfills. They do a lot of them in the state of Vermont. And so that's why he reached out to Casella to see if they were able to install this fan on top of our landfill. That's where we're at.
So what's the projected timeline? Is there? No.
This year.
Oh, that's a relief.
And I really don't, we don't have an answer.
Right, we don't.
I was hoping to have, we were hoping to have a better answer when we met with Patrick last week, but we didn't really. Might have to do a little research myself.
I started today, looking up a few things.
Great.
But the ball is picked up, and it will get done. I don't think it'll go into winter. I mean, I can't imagine it would take that long.
The installation, if somebody does it, it's a debt.
A debt.
Yeah.
It's not--
So it's really just about finding the right person.
Very simple. It needs to be done, but it needs to be done by somebody that is--
Trained.
Yes.
And certifies their work.
Yes.
Yes, or duly insured for that work.
Yes.
Okay, update on the tree warden and danger trees.
Okay, I met with the tree warden, David Mans III. And there is an existing document of danger trees that, it's not an exhaustive list, it's not a large list, but it's a good place to start. So they, it looks like he drove around with Jim, who is the former warden. And the first date is 11/8/2023, and the last one is 1/5/2024. So they were looking at these when the foliage was off, which is, which is good. There are street names, and they list either it's dead or dying, and, you know, this is the road and what kind of tree, but we need a longer list.
So it's just that one page?
Yes, I will actually--
Some of the roads on there are actually the wrong roads, though.
Yes.
If you look at the name of the person that is on where the tree is, it's not that good.
Right.
It's very hard to do without it.
Yeah.
So we have to think outside of the box, I think, and figure out how to add to the list and to get eyes on the road. Talked to Mike about it a little bit today, and our current tree warden doesn't really have time to do this, so there's some discussion about figuring that out.
Like, potentially, we need to search for another tree warden.
Tree warden, who does have the time.
Who really has time to devote to this, because it's, there's a backlog.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it'd be very beneficial for us, too, to have a tree warden that has time to help us.
Yeah.
Maybe the gentleman that we're hiring for the--
That's what I said.
--summer time work, he has forestry tech.
Not enough, I'm afraid. We need a real, an experienced forester.
Need to stay within your budget, too. You could blow the budget.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, removal-wise, definitely.
Well, even in terms of the tree warden's time.
Oh, really? Too? Are you talking about the tree warden's budget or the DPW?
Oh, the DPW.
What's in the budget for tree?
Oh, yeah. We could do that in one road, easy. Two, three days.
So they need to be prioritized?
Yes, but if we had a tree warden that made the list, then, you know, they need a budget. Oh, we need to have more money in trees, and this is why we need to have more money in trees and less money in this other section of the budget. Having that list is actually beneficial for us with the highway department, because when somebody says, "Well, why are you cutting my tree down?" Well, your tree is frag by our tree warden, and what is it, hazard to the general public, this is why we're doing it. So the documentation is huge, too.
And I would think the tree warden would also notify the people beforehand.
Yes.
That's another--
Supposed to.
By legislation, it's supposed to.
And these are the trees that are on town property or in the town right of way?
And then we talked about reporting, like, how do you get the trees reported? And I did mention something about the website, and there is already one for the roads. If you see like a problematic road, click here. We can add tree, or tree. Like, if someone's driving around and they're like, "Holy cow, that tree is really dangerous." There should be a way to report it.
We could add one for trees?
Add one for trees, or do road and tree, because it's already there.
Or just any complaint.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be helpful to have the trees sort of separate.
Yeah, probably.
Is there a system like semifias for cemeteries, that there are for trees in a town?
No, that I know of.
Well, I'm wondering if that is something maybe to look at, because if you kind of break it out into, you know, segments or something like that, but there, but as we're thinking about priorities and things like that, or, you know, even just breaking it up into geographic areas and things like that, that this will likely need to be digitized in some way, and that they may already create, there might already be something like that.
They can depend on a map, you know, they just have a map, and they just have a tree and log the GPS coordinate.
Yeah, but to have it digitized in some way, as opposed to a spreadsheet, yeah.
They would have the pins. I mean, you'd have to zoom in to find out. The person who has to cut--
I don't know. I just, it's a curiosity. Right.
There might be, I think what Martha's saying is there might be a program that uploads that automatically into something, right? So when somebody sends that information, it's--
But also then potentially a way to kind of prioritize things and look at, you know, in a way that, like, just creating a Lister card, but as a tree, a danger tree card. I don't know. I'm thinking that there's--
And then things will come up, like if there's a storm and one gets struck by lightning.
And then you could say, "Oh, okay, it's marked down," and then it comes down to, I mean, there's, we live in a technology age. I'm sure somebody has thought of this, whether or not it's affordable or anything else, but it might be worse.
Or Jen can build it from scratch.
Jen could build it.
I'm building it right now in my head, Martha.
I love a good system. That's the medical person in me.
But in the meantime, I guess it's appropriate to say that we are looking for another tree warden.
Who has the time--
Somebody who really has the time to devote to this and is eager to do so, and is qualified to do so. So it needs to be an experienced forester, and anybody who is interested or knows of somebody who might be interested should contact Paul.
Yes, please.
Great. All right. Update on the removal of 43 Buck Hill Road and the barn.
We already kind of covered that a little bit. And Joe's fire department training is Thursday, the 27th. And Joe's fire department training is Thursday, the 27th. I don't know what time of day. If he told me, I don't remember, but it's happening.
Anybody who wants to see the fun can, can.
The smoke, don't worry. Not from fire.
Quarterly reports from town committees and boards. Where are we with that?
I've sent the email to all the chairs. Have heard back from just one saying, okay. So they've been informed.
Okay.
And, and I said, you know, stay tuned for the calendar. I explained that a calendar would be made and so no one's reporting all at once. And that they could, the chair could report or the select board liaison could do so.
Okay, yes, Martha?
Can we go back just for a moment for that fire department training? And if there is smoke coming out of the building, do they have some kind of sign or something so that neighbors don't get alarmed and then call emergency response, thinking that something is on fire? If it's happening during the day or other times?
Put it on the website, and I have to call Joe anyway, a real excavator.
Fire truck that they have is going to be.
I'm assuming that that would be the case, but I just was thinking that if, yeah, people see smoke. We're all neighborly here and that the dispatch might get a lot of calls if there isn't kind of appropriate.
Notification.
Well, I can alert all of, all of the people. I would alert for like a road closure. It should get phone calls.
Yes.
Yeah, and maybe the dispatch.
Watching it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to derail.
That's a good thought.
Just was thinking about that and.
We don't want other.
People do not know.
Urgent calls getting sidetracked.
Or people not getting EMS because.
Fire truck training. I don't know what time popped in. I don't think he told us.
Sorry.
What is that, 7? I want to say they do it Thursday nights at 7.
At 7:00 PM?
I think that's when they do.
Okay.
Is it to take pictures?
Yeah, take pictures.
Okay. Scheduling the road brainstorming meeting. Mike and Paula and I talked about this today and came up with August 14th at 5:30 at the town garage.
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday, yeah. Summer is a hard time to schedule, but.
At 5:30.
So that's a, a moment for people to sit around the table together and talk about prioritizing and different perspectives on that. That piece of, that long document that we have up on the website. And this is not a formal select board meeting, so actually it's important that only two of the board be there.
And I cannot be there, so.
Okay, well, there we go. All right. So, other business.
I have some.
We have some, right?
I have some, yeah, little tidbits.
Yeah.
National Weather Service has issued a heat advisory, so I had Jen put it on the website. Everyone probably knows, but we put it on the website just because it gives tips and such. I have two things for Naomi to sign. One's the financial management questionnaire that I sent you in the packet from the treasurer. And the other is the new liquor license for the Shaftesbury Country Store for the new owners as they wait to reopen.
Sure.
Yeah.
So.
So they can sell beer and things.
So I guess we. Yeah, we want to vote on these, yeah. You want to vote to allow me to sign them. First, the, the liquor license.
Who weathered the new owners?
The Massaros.
Okay.
From Arlington.
Arlington.
From Arlington, yeah.
The Sorrows.
Very nice.
Can I have a motion to sign this Department of Liquor and Lottery Division of Liquor Control application for a second-class license for the Shaftesbury Country Market? Thank you, Brad. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see where I'm supposed to sign it, but you can show me that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that was on the line.
There isn't actually one, okay. And then.
Oh, it just says sign last page.
Okay.
Marlene says sign last page.
Marlene says to sign the last page. I'll do that. And then there's the financial management questionnaire that Melanie signed that we all read presumably. Yes, that's, it's really just a yes or no series of questions that she fills out every year and.
For the auditors.
For the auditors.
Yep.
And about how the, she manages the money, really. And we need to know about it and sign that we know about it, so we need to be signing that we all read it. And so we all read it. And any questions about it? Can I have a motion to pass the financial management questionnaire, Naomi's signature?
I'll make a motion to pass the.
To allow me to sign it.
To allow you to sign the financial management questionnaire.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So today's date is the.
17th.
Anything else? Anybody else have any other business? Okay, review of action items.
We have the resolution changes that we just have to make with the numbers. We're going to add a little bit more to the explanation of the ARPA resolution that we're going to put on the website. We're going to put up a tree warden thing on the website. And we're going to create language for the Open Meeting Act revisions for next time so that we can review and sign.
Paula and I will work on that, I guess. Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Bye.
Paula, it's my pleasure. Such a long one.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay. Thanks a lot.